Good evening, everyone. It's June 10th. Ascension Parish Planning and Zoning Commission is now in session. Would you all please rise as we recite our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note, all commissioners with the exception of Mr. Sanji and Mr. Ori are present. Staff introduction, please.
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development. Lindsay Amanda, Legal Counsel for Planning and Zoning.
Ricky Compton, Planning and Development Director.
Ben Moran, Planner.
Lance Brock, Zoning Official.
Rhonda Pro, Engineering.
And there are no comments from the Chairman, any general business? Can I get a motion to accept minutes from the previous meeting?
No, I have a question first, or a comment about the minutes. I didn't get it, I just got them, I went through them today, so I apologize for that, I didn't get the comments back. But on page seven of the minutes of the previous meeting where we note that we had a, the public hearing was open and the following spoke, I think it should be reflected as to whether or not they spoke in support of or in opposition to the, to the issue. And we should, I think that should be a practice of ours. It's not, it's not reflected in here, and honestly, I think you'd have to probably go through the tape to determine. There are either, some are actually neutral, and you might note that if you can't tell, but they were either in support of or in opposition, I think that should be reflected. So that's my, my comment, Mr. Chairman. So I would ask that we postpone the, the approval of this till that's corrected unless anyone else checks.
Are there any objections? We accept? Okay. First item, 9A. Boys Poirier, did I pronounce it correctly, Poirier property?
Yes, sir. James Fogle representing Mr. Boyce on the following family partition, asking the commission for approval.
Staff? Any comments from commissioners? At this time, the floor is open for public hearing. Any comments, any cards?
Kevin Turner.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Turner, my wife Peggy, we're the neighbors of this property. Not sure we're in the right venue for this. We're not opposed to the breaking up of the property for lots. We are very concerned about where the access is going to come from to give that access to the two children who are going to be given plots. We are told it's going to be against our house within just a few feet of our bedroom. And so that is our only concern, no, no issue with the breaking up of the property. So is this the right time, or is there going to be another meeting where there's an easement?
I think that's an appropriate question.
Sir?
I think that's an appropriate question.
Thank you.
This proposed 30-foot servitude passage is all on my client's property. In relationship to where your house is, that's a civil matter if your house is that close to the property line. All this 30-foot is down on my client's property.
That is no issue there, yes, sir, that is correct. He has 500 feet of frontage on Highway 931 to access that property, and he chose, he's chosen to take the 30 feet at the, at the end of it against my house. So I do have an issue with that, and if this is a civil matter, then I will take it as such. I have no, again, no issue with the, the breaking up of the plots, just have a, where his choice of access is. He has other places to access that property.
Is your, your house is three feet from the property line?
I did not use the word three, no, sir, I said very close.
Very close.
My property line and his property line are shared. He wants to put the easement against the property line.
Well, that's, well, I can understand if you don't have 500 of the feet.
That is my only issue with this matter. I would like him to reconsider where he puts the, the access road, that's it.
Is that amenable?
What's that?
Is that amenable?
I'd have to approach my client on that.
Client is not present.
I mean, the intentions of this property, I mean, that's the logical spot to put it.
The intention by the, by the neighbor, Mr. Poirier, is to grant his children, his adult children, two pieces of property on the far edge of the property for them to build. When I asked him why he doesn't access more in the center of his property, he said because at one point when I get older, I may want to sell that property. I said, well, that would mean, that would be the direct access to both sides of the property, splitting it in half, if you will.
Well, that means private. They want to keep this road private for them and only them. If you move it somewhere else, you, you decrease its property value by putting a servitude of passage on the most valuable piece of property.
You also, you also decrease my value, my property by putting, I'm also have a, a public road next to my house on the other side of my house. So I will have two public, a driveway and a public road sandwiching my home. And that's, my only issue is there's two homes going back there, and if he decides to sell another piece of property, how am I going to stop him once that driveway is in? I have no matter of recourse.
You're talking about, you said divided even further?
If he decides, as he told me today, if he chooses to sell other plots-
This would be the, the bigger tract to the west of the property.
Correct.
Nobody will have access to these two, this driveway except these two lots.
How do I know that, once that driveway's in?
If this would be divided up any further, it has to come before this commission to get approved.
I still, I still oppose where the, that's the only issue I have with it, I would like to have further hearing on it, but that's not, you know, if that's possible.
I have a question for legal, can we, I mean, we're, we're talking about whether or not the, the family partition meets the, the guidelines of the code. Can we regulate if we grant the family partition where he puts his servitudes or easements or things in that nature?
If it's an issue, there's a fence line, fence that could be put up down the property line.
If he meets the requirements, approve the, the plot.
We can't get on and say we approve it, but we, we, I don't know that we have the power to do that.
I understand.
And that's, that's my, I understand what you're saying, I just don't know that we as a body can regulate what he does with the property if we grant the, the partition or don't grant the partition.
What is, what is the issue here that you're speaking of, of a fence, a fence line?
You can put your fence right down the property line, bide your house from this, the driveway.
If I need to, I'll do that, okay.
Peggy?
Thank you for hearing us.
Peggy Turner. Hi, obviously, I'm Kevin's wife. We've lived here for 18 years, we've been residents of Ascension Parish. And where they want this road, first off, it's going to be a limestone road, which is going to cause a lot of dust into, you know, onto our property. It's within eight feet of an outside air conditioning unit that we would have to obviously move because of the dirt issue that would cause us a tremendous expense to move this central air conditioning unit. On that side of our home are our bedrooms. Where they're looking at putting it, if you're at the stop sign at George Ruyer, if you don't stop at that stop sign, you're going into that road. And again, it's within 12 feet of our bedroom. We've had several accidents over the past 18 years, some quite serious with people running the stop sign at the corner of 931 and George Ruyer. That being the fact that we actually had them put up the flashing stop signs, which, you know, has cut down a little bit, but we have on an average of about two accidents a year, and some of them are quite, you know, quite bad. Some of them have come already very close to our house with it having to even go, you know, their automobiles or their motorcycles going through the ditch. Without a ditch being there and a driveway, that's giving them, you know, a clear shot to hit our home, and our bedroom windows are right there on that very corner. We have a two-story house at that part, there's two bedrooms, one up and one down. You know, furthermore, you know, Mr. Poirier is concerned about his property value, but so are we. We have 160 feet of front footage on 931, but we only have 110 that's usable because Tom Williams Road was granted into our property. So we have a little slice of pie, per se, that's nonusable land. Tom Williams Road, our 110 feet, and then where they want to put this limestone road, right there. There are 350 feet on the other side of Mr. Poirier's driveway that is still on his property. Next to his property is his brother-in-law's property. So we feel like they don't want to interfere with their family, but in not interfering with their family, they're damaging, you know, our, the integrity of the, the property that we own. They're also severely damaging our property value because we would only have this little 110-foot strip between two roads. And, you know, they're certainly going to be affecting the quality of our life. We have a swimming pool with a limestone driveway, I'll never get all the dust out of my pool, regardless of the fact that also having to move a central unit as well, so, thank you.
Any further comments? Would you like to respond?
A fence? I mean, you have 110 feet no matter where, where he puts the driveway. And that's, that's your road for him to mean, it's, he lives next to a house with a pasture behind it, I mean, you know. I'm sure you can work out something, Mr. Poirier, where he doesn't have to put it exactly right there on the property line, he's got 30 feet to work with. You know, it could be moved over, a fence could be put down that line, or that section where, you know. Yeah, well, that's, no, that's their property line, that's where they mark their property line.
There's two stakes for the, for the road.
Well, we didn't state that, then why else put that? We marked the property lines, we didn't mark any servitude.
Do we have any further comments?
I can make a suggestion.
Yes, please.
For private access servitudes, there's a 25-foot front setback. When it's a corner lot, it's 12 and a half feet, which is why it's showing 12 and a half foot setback on here. 931 is the front, so the corner lots get half of the required front, 25, 12 and a half. In that regard, maybe sliding it over west, 12 and a half feet, so that there's a 12 and a half foot space between their property line.
I mean, that's, no, that's, you know, we're not going to leave a gap between the, the property line and the, and the servitude.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't, you can't, she can't. Ma'am? Oh, why wouldn't he put the, the servitude on the west side of the property?
Well, eventually, Mr. Poirier is going to probably sell the remaining portion of the property.
Including the portion he lives on currently?
He lives on one acre of land, it was recommended by staff-
He lives in the house and with the barn in front.
He lives, he lives right there, that's his current residence.
So why wouldn't he, why wouldn't he just put the, the access road? I mean, I, I agree that it's prob, this is a civil matter, it's probably not in our prerogative. There, there's no reason why we shouldn't approve this family partition, but why wouldn't he put the, the access road on, on the west side of his house?
Because if they, with the next map, what we're doing is we're creating the lot for his house. It was recommended by staff, we were, this, this was existing as two lots. Staff wanted us to do this in two separate maps, basically cut out the two lots for his kids, which they're permanently, presently working on plans for their house.
And where is his lot going to be?
His lot is the whole 15 acres. His house is going, his lot with the next map is going to exist exactly where his house is now. It's basically get the, the west line along 1B and 1C is just going to come straight forward.
Yeah, that's, that's right. So why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you have an access road on that side?
Well, if you look where the house is, look how close it is to his house on that side, for one thing. But for future developments-
Well, it's going to apparently be-
For future developments and everything like that, if anything happens, this turns into a subdivision or something like that, they didn't want their driveway being shared with this property. They wanted some, some of these separate-
Well, the driveway, I'm suggesting the driveway would be, as it is on the east side, would be within the property.
This is the highest part of the property.
What is?
As well, in this northwest corner, that's why we're pushing everything on this side. Northeast, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I got, I still don't get why, I, you know, I, like, I, it's just a suggestion that it be considered. It's, it's not, it has nothing to do with our decision that we make as a, as a commissioner.
I mean, if them and-
It meets all the requirements of family.
Like I said, I mean, how many lots do we have in this, this parish that are right on top of each other? I mean, this is-
This is just, all we're talking about is, is, is trying to be a good neighbor.
Yeah, I mean, if, if they meet with Mr. Poirier and he agrees to it, you know, we wouldn't have to come back before here, we can just switch the servitude over and get everybody to sign off on it.
James, is there any reason why you couldn't just move the, the utility servitude to the other side?
Yeah, because you're pushing it all back, you're pushing everything west. Because you got the 12-foot, your 30-foot, then you got your 12 and a half foot setback.
But it doesn't cause any issues?
Yeah, you're moving everything over 12 feet.
Well, I, I would suggest that, as soon as we finish with the public hearing, that, that the neighbors get with Mr., is it, Mr. Poirier, and see if they can't work out some better arrangement that's going to be amenable to everyone. If his children and he are going to live there, I'm sure they'd like to-
Oh, yeah.
Be good neighbors, so, but, but, thank you.
Yeah.
Any further comments? At this time, we'd like to close the floor. Public hearing? Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
In motion?
Second, in the hopes that good neighborship prevails.
Exactly.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any names? The motion passes unanimously. 9B, Raul Dakota.
Ellen Jackson with Mecklen Taylor Incorporated, representing the property for Michael Anthony Turo, asking for your approval.
Staff?
All the comments have been addressed, just, they are using an existing private servitude of access, so the current users of it will have to sign, sign off.
And we'll assume there will be no problem with that?
No, I have the document and in the process of getting its signatures now.
Commissioners' comments? At this time, we'd like to open the floor for public hearing. Any comments? At this time, we will close the floor for public hearing. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve.
It's been motion for approval?
Contingency.
Yeah, contention upon the-
With contingent, with, with the contingency. Can I get a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
In motion and second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
So noted. Motion passes unanimously. Cully Broussard Property.
Ellen Jackson again, representing the Cully Broussard Property, asking for your approval.
Staff?
So, they are looking to put their private access servitude coming from Gidry Road, that northwest side. If you look, that thin strip of property connecting to Gidry Road is too narrow, so they're asking for a reduction in the width of the private access servitude from 30 feet to 28 feet to fit everything in there. And then the way she's showing it, once it gets out of that and into the larger piece of the property, it opens back up to the required 30.
And who would, who approves the variance, the variance board?
You guys.
Oh, we do, okay.
Any comments from commissioners?
Do you have any issues with the variance being approved?
No, sir.
I think they're saying that they'll approve contingent on that being approved. At this time, we'll open the floor for public hearing. Any comments? Step up, state your name, please.
I live in Beach Ridge subdivision, which is where Gidry Road runs through. My only question is, I don't have any issues with the private drive being put in. My only issue is, will it ever be made public and ran completely through to, to the other public road that's up front? Because that would in turn put a lot of traffic through this subdivision into our area.
That's it?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the only issue I have, but I don't have any problem with the road, I just don't want it to be a public road. And I think the rest of the subdivision agrees with that.
Care to respond?
Can it be a public road?
They have no intention of making it public. It's just simply for that private driveway for his son to have his access to his lot.
And in the future, if, if the intention is to make it public, it has to go before you guys, right? It has to come before the commission?
The council.
It's, it's only 30 feet, so they don't even accept 30 feet.
It doesn't meet the minimum standards, does it?
As long as there's one, some of that other additional space.
This piece of property was under consideration by a developer, and there were so many hurdles that they were going to have to jump through to make this property developable that I don't believe it's ever going to become a major subdivision because one of the issues was Cully Broussard up on the front. We told them they would have to improve that to a real road because it's not big enough either. And so the costs of that, plus the cost of the Gidry Road connection, there's lots of fill that would be needed. The likelihood of that piece of property ever being developed is slim to none.
Answers my questions. Any further comments from the floor? No comments, at this time, we'll close the floor for public hearing. Can I get a motion?
I move to accept, subject to the, or move to accept and to grant the variance.
Second.
It's been motion and second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So noted, the motion passes unanimously. Whitney J. Amady.
Ellen Jackson again, with the Whitney Amady Property. There was one comment about the, um, the T-turnaround that has been rectified and asking for your approval.
Staff?
Yeah, everything's been taken care of, we recommend you approve it.
Any comments from commissioners? At this time, we'd like to open the floor for public hearing. Any cards, any comments? At this time, we close the floor for public hearing. Can I get a motion?
I move for approval.
It's been motion for approval?
A second.
It's been motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So noted, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 10B, Ose Prairie.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Murray McCullough with Benchmark Group, 11328 Pennywood Avenue in Baton Rouge. This is just a simple little request for preliminary plat to approve a small area for, that, that ultimately will be a private commercial driveway. So the, the property that in question that we're asking to be approved is strictly that which encompasses the roadway. I think we've submitted the information to the parish and had approval on the drainage impact study and, and recommended for approval, if I recall right, for the preliminary plats. So our, our respectful request that this be approved. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Staff, comments, please?
As far as the plat, yeah, everything's taken care of, everything's ready to go with this. Rhonda reviewed the drainage, though if you have any questions about that. This will allow them to divide tract X1B, the back larger portion. It'll allow them to make a few tracks off of that for commercial development. And it is private road, and it will always be private road.
Comments from commissioners? At this time, we'd like to open the floor for public hearing. Any comments, any cards? No comments, no cards, at this time, we'd like to close the floor for public hearing. Can I get a motion from the floor?
Move for approval.
It's been motion for approval?
A second.
A second?
A second.
It's been motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
So noted, the motion passes unanimously. Staff report?
So, um, I wanted to give you guys an update on family partitions since we're six months into the new regulations. I look back, and last year, from January 1st to June 10th, we had 27 lots approved. That's only approved. Of those, only six lots were created. That's the people with, donated the property and had the plat signed and recorded and everything. So 27 approved, six created. This year, including tonight, it's 21 approved and eight have been created. So we got two more than last year.
Tell us why you think that the approval is such a small percentage of the ones we, we review and, and approve? Why, why the lot creation is, I mean, hard to say.
I have no idea.
So the property owner who wants to do the, the, the family partition isn't following through somewhere?
Yeah, they have, after you guys approve it, they have 180 days to transfer the property and have the plat signed. I've only came across a couple in the last few years that I've been here where they submitted it and the time was up. I, you guys approve them and they just don't come back to us.
Yes, I mean, it's strange, I wanted to tell the person that was here earlier, concerned about the family partition. It seems like the chances of that actually happening are, you know, only 30% at best anyway, so I'm not sure, you know, there's, it's time for concern yet.
And if they don't create the lot, how long do they have to wait before they could come back?
They could come back immedi, immediately.
But they have to go through the entire process again.
Yeah, but there's no waiting period.
Curious.
We really just thought it was interesting as an exercise because once again, like, we changed the major subdivision guidelines, everybody screams bloody murder that you're going to kill family partitions, you're going to end it. The trend hasn't changed, we're approving roughly the same number, the same number are getting created. I think what we can say with relative certainty is that the lots that have been created are legitimate family partitions, and we haven't seen somebody taking an abuse of that procedure to create lots.
Engineers, staff report?
Okay, currently, there are 26 subdivisions under construction and at least 17 commercial properties under construction, so that hadn't slowed either.
That concludes our report. No further business, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Yeah, move for adjournment.
In motion?
Second.
Planning permission has adjourned. Crime Commission has adjourned.